Good afternoon. Welcome to the July 11th City of Apopka Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you would please stand and join me for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During our meeting, each agenda item will have a time for the public to speak on any item they wish to. If you have an item that you would like to speak about that is not on the agenda, that is planning and zoning related, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number one, approval of meeting minutes from February 14th, 2023. Assume everyone's read it. Need a motion?
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes February 14th, 2023.
Second.
Slow down there, chief. You're too fast for me. Motion by Commissioner Washington, second by Commissioner Stanley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, meeting minutes from March 14th, 2023. A motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 14 minutes.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, meeting minutes of April 11th, 2023. I have a motion.
I can make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 11th, 2023.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Dumey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, meeting minutes from May 9th, 2023. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 9th minutes.
Was that you, Bush, or Ms. Stanley?
Yes.
Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number one, public hearing for comprehensive plan amendment, small-scale future land use amendment, 225 East Seventh Street, applicant Erica Hughes, VHB, and owner's Community Health Centers, Inc. Mr. Howe.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager here with the city's planning department. I'll be presenting the first case on the agenda, small-scale future land use map amendment from office to mixed use for 225 East Seventh Street, which is the site of the Community Health Centers facility, medical office building. As you can see, the graphic on the screen shows the vicinity map of where the property is located. Aerial map shows the property as well as the subject site with the building on there. The applicant is requesting the future land use amendment to allow an increase in floor area ratio to the subject property because there's going to be a future expansion taking place in the medical office building. In the office future land use category, you can only have a floor area ratio maximum of .3. They're going to mixed use, which in the downtown, you can go up to two for floor area ratio. So that would allow them to have the accessible floor area that they need to undertake the expansion. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposal and the staff recommends approval. And the requested mo- or the recommended motion this evening is recommend approval. If you have any questions, staff and applicant are available.
All right. Does anyone have questions of staff? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Does applicant have a presentation?
No, sir.
Very well. Bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to find the proposed change in future land use from the office to mixed use consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas, recommending approval of the future land use amendment based on the findings in fact presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dumey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number two, special exemption Freeport property. Owners Kelly Park VB Development LLC, applicants Lounes Law Firm, Caratera Tidrow. Location, west of State Road 429 and south of Kelly Park Road. It's quasi judicial to ask, has anyone on the board had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
No, sir.
Mr. Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Bobby Howe, Planning Manager, for the record. The owner of the subject property is requesting approval of a special exception to allow multifamily uses in the interchange overlay district of the Kelly Park Form-Based Code. You may recall seeing this property come forward for a request of rezoning as part of the Freeport property, which is basically going to be joined in with the Wild Oaks Development. So it's almost like a little island within the development there, as you can see outlined within the red square. All residential uses require a special exception in the interchange overlay district in the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. As I previously stated, the property is located within the proposed Wild Oaks Development, which is generally located southwest, on the southwest corner of Kelly Park Road and State Road 429. In accordance with Section 2.5.1 G4 of the Land Development Code, a special exception request is required to be in compliance with all 12 standards, as noted within the code, which it skipped over, as you can see there on that slide. And I believe those are contained within the staff report. The rezoning ordinance that's going to second, uh, city council for second reading next Wednesday is scheduled for adoption and it is subject to basically the approval of this special exception to allow multifamily uses within the interchange zoning district. Planning Commission has the final authority to take action on a special exception application and may approve the application, approve the application with recommend, with conditions, or deny the application. And the Development Review Committee recommends approval and the staff recommendation is approval. And as I mentioned, the role tonight is to either approve the special exception, approve it with conditions, or deny. Staff and applicant are available for the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Howe. Anyone have questions of staff? The applicant here, do they have a presentation?
No presentation, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Bring it back to the, is anyone from the public here that wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a special exception to allow multifamily uses within the interchange overlay district of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area, subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dumey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Site plans, number one, major development plan Arcadia Orlando Health.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain from any discussion and voting. I work for the Agency for Healthcare Administration. I'll be issuing license if this is so.
Is your mic on?
It's on. And so I don't, I don't want to participate due to that.
All right. And I don't know what the quorum here is that he needs to leave the room while it goes on.
Nope. He's, he's fine at the diet as long as he does not participate in the discussion. If he fills, if he were to fill out the form prior to, he could still participate in the discussion. Since the form is not available, he said he was signed not participating, but he is welcome to stay at the diets.
Be quiet, bud. All right. Mr. Howe. Oh, Mr. Hit.
Oh, this, yeah, different one. I did. Jim Hegg, Community Development Director. This is a major development plan, plan for the Arcadia Orlando Health. The applicant is Crunk Engineering and Adam Crunk is here for that. The location is 1452 South Orange Blossom Trail, future land uses commercial, zoning is CR, which is regional commercial, and the proposed use is behavioral hospital. Track size is 10.34 acres. The Arcadia Orlando Health is a major development plan. Proposes the development of a two-story building with 99,497 square feet of area for a 144-bed behavioral health hos- hospital on approximately 10.3 acres. While 36 parking spaces for the 144-bed plus one parking space for every four employees is required, the applicant is actually proposing 162 parking spaces plus six additional accessible parking spaces. The maximum, excuse me, the maximum permitted building height is 35 feet, which they are not actually up to that full height. There will be security walls along sections of the perimeter that are attached to the building. This is for the security for the, for the tenants. The site is wooded and has a wetland area on the eastern portion of the property that will remain undeveloped. The landscape plan proposed, proposes a combination of oak, magnolia, and bald cypress trees within the landscape parking islands and the perimeter of the project area. The bald cypress trees do embellish the frontage along 441. For transportation, there are two, there are two planned access points. One on the northern portion, which is a right-in, right-out only. And the southern access is also proposed for a right-in, right-out. They do also have a plan left in, on that southern portion also. Orange County had been notified at the time the site plan was submitted, which is for part of the DRC agenda for the distribution itself. Public hearing schedule is right now for Plan Commission courses tonight and city council's proposed for August 8th at 1:30 PM. The overall site plan, this is the architectural renderings for the, for the, for the site. This is also an inpatient facility. There are no outpatient, in other words, you can't go and, and come like a normal hospital. The Development Review Committee does recommend approval of the, of the project and staff also recommend, and the, the recommendation for, from staff for Planning Commission is also for approval. We do have, the applicant is here for a PowerPoint presentation also. Or we can answer questions at this stage, but I'd, I'd recommend hearing what they, for, for their portion also. You're up.
All right. Well, applicant, please approach and name and address for the record, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Appreciate your time this evening. My name is Dr. Jeffrey Woods and I'm Operations Group President with Arcadia Healthcare. We are headquartered in Nashville, Tennessee, which is right side, outside of Nashville, Tennessee. And we have a number of hospitals, about, on the, around 250 hospitals and healthcare facilities around 49, 39 states and Puerto Rico, and we have a number of facilities in Florida. So I'm happy to have the opportunity to speak with you this evening about this project. And I have with me Greg Oe, who is a Senior Vice President with Orlando Health, and he'll be coming up to speak as well. The agenda for this evening is to make a brief project presentation. So you sort of understand the scope and what we intend to do and what our intentions are with this hospital. And then I'll turn it over, we'll turn it over to the architects and the engineers to get into the details that are probably of greater interest to you than the backstory on the hospital. So again, thank you for your time. Greg? Oh, actually, let me make some quick introductions. Greg Oe, Senior Vice President, Ambulatory and Post-Acute Services with Orlando Health. Cortez Watley, the manager, Local Government Affairs and Public Policy with Orlando Health. Adam Crunk, who is our civil engineer for this project, and Ship Hill, who is the architect in charge of this project. And they'll all be speaking.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to present to the commission tonight. Let me give you a little bit of background on how we formed this joint venture with Arcadia and why we did so. In 2020, Orlando Health looked at itself and said, "We do not have the breadth and depth of programs in the behavioral health space to really meet the needs of the community." Today, we have a very large primary care group across central Florida. In addition to that, we have 1,500 physicians and advanced practitioners as part of our medical group. Both of those groups of physicians confront behavioral health issues on a daily basis. And so we needed to build greater capacity in that area. And truth be told, we didn't, we really didn't have the expertise to do so. So we started a search. We went and looked nationally as well as regionally at various behavioral health providers and through a rigorous process selected Arcadia. As Dr. Woods indicated, Arcadia is the largest behavioral health provider in the country with relationships with a number of outstanding health systems in, in various states. So it took us some time to put together the, the joint venture, but in December of 2021, the joint venture was formed. In advance of that, Orlando Health started recruiting board-certified psychiatrists in order to support not only the hospital, but additional clinic activity as well. Again, building that wherewithal so that we could serve the, the community of, of central Florida. The partnership was formed on the basis of having shared vision on how we approach healthcare. Patients are of the utmost important, providing outstanding care to the communities that we serve, improving the life that all of us enjoy as residents of, of central Florida. So let me go to the next slide. So Dr. Woods indicated that Arcadia has a, a large national footprint. And as you can see from the map, they are in fact present in 39 different states. In addition to that, you'll see a number of dots here in the state of Florida, which allow us to have resources in terms of comparing our program and our results to others, not only, again, here in the state, but across the country. As all of us stop and think about behavioral health, I suspect all of us can think of somebody that is known to us that has a behavioral health disorder. And how, and you all know how disruptive that can be to families, to, to workplaces, to societal functions in general. Just to review some quick numbers, one in five adults have a mental health need. In Florida, that is about two and a half million people. One in 10 adults in Florida report poor mental health for at least 14 days out of the month. As you look at access to behavioral health services here in the state of Florida, unfortunately, we sit 49th out of 50 states. And very sadly, suicide is the second leading cause of death among Floridians age 25 to 34. All of this pointing to the need of additional behavioral health. Let me turn things over back to Dr. Woods to talk a little bit about the clinical program that's contemplated.
Thank you, Greg. So I want to talk a little bit about who we are going to be treating, but also who we are not going to be treating, because there are limitations for this hospital in terms of who we are able to serve. In terms of the patients that we are serving and intend to serve, it will be adults, patients, senior citizens, youth, and it'll be individuals who have various diagnostic categories that you see in front of you, including what we call general mood disorders, so things like depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, or post-traumatic stress. And often, post-traumatic stress is the care that we provide to military members, veterans like myself, or folks with the law enforcement or fire departments who've encountered traumatic experiences and require some level of care from time to time in order to manage that. We'll also care for adults who have thought disorders. Thought disorders, that is that class of diagnosis where there's a disturbance of perception and there's a disturbance of their reality testing, their ability to relate to the world in the way that you and I relate to the world. And through medications and through therapies, we're able to resolve that and put the patient into a state of remission where they can go back to living a more normal life and often return to work and certainly their families and their homes. In addition, we will be taking care of seniors, as I mentioned, and two classes of seniors. The, the first group are those that are cognitively intact, their faculties are, are strong, but they are dealing with some of the same issues that I described that the adults deal with. Mood disorder, thought disorder, substance use disorder. And I think it's important that we emphasize that we will have dual diagnosis, substance use disorder treatment as part of the continuum of care for all of the patients in the hospital, whether it's alcohol or other substances that might be, might be being abused. So we have that first class of seniors who are the cognitively intact, high functioning, but they are dealing with the major depressive disorders. We have the second class of seniors who have mild to moderate neurocognitive decline, often of an Alzheimer's type, and they have some disturbance of mood and behavior. And that disturbance of mood behavior is highly amenable to treatment, which allows them to return oftentimes to home or their assisted living, or if they're coming from a nursing home, back to their nursing home in a better condition than when they came to us and a better quality for their life. I mentioned already, dual diagnosis and substance use disorders, those services will be provided so that we're caring for the whole person, and child and adolescent behavioral health. We'll also be working with the community and with Orlando Health and other providers on understanding the unique needs of this community and the broader central Florida community on whether there may be special population types that require some care. And those may be incorporated into the hospital, but all within this domain. We will have intensive outpatient and partial hospitalization for patients who require either a step-down from inpatient or as an alternative to inpatient. And that's a couple of hours a day, three to five days a week, depending upon what their physician and treatment team recommend for them. Who are patients or not? And I should mention this, our patients more broadly are our friends, they are our family, they are our coworkers. They're the people that we engage with and that we love every day. Those are our patients. They are our neighbors. Who are patients are not for this hospital, we are not set up to be a forensic facility. So we will not be a, we're not a jail, we're not going to be a facility that is holding people in an incarcerated state. Now, to be clear, we will absolutely have involuntary patients under the Baker Act in the hospital, but we are not taking patients who are in the criminal justice system. We're not a forensic facility. We also have screening tools to make sure that we are not accepting patients who are a threat to the patient population or a threat to the community. And that includes individuals who may have history of sexually aggressive, violent, or other type of acting out behavior. And so that's a little bit about who we don't take at this hospital. There are other resources that we can refer those patients to when they need it, but this population is for the, for the group that I described to you a moment ago. So when a patient is admitted to our hospital, it's important probably to know that the vast majority of the admissions will come to the hospital from local emergency departments. The patients will have, you know, presented to an emergency department, had a complaint of some sort, a psychiatric diagnosis was identified, and they may be referred on for inpatient hospitalization and evaluation and treatment. We will have an ambulance transport bay, but it's important to note as well, there will be no lights and sirens at this facility. We are not an acute care hospital in the sense that a medical hospital is, so there will be no lights and sirens moving in and out of this hospital. And the ambulance bay is, is covered and off to the side of the hospital and not visible to the street. And so it shouldn't cause any disruption to the community. Patients while they're in the hospital, typically length of stay is somewhere between seven to 10 days. So this is not long-term hospitalization, this is acute stabilization of symptoms and then returning that patient to their outpatient provider to continue their care and treatment and return them to home and, in most cases, usually to work as well if they are of working age. They are cared for by a multidisciplinary team of professionals, including psychiatrists, primary medicine physicians, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, social workers, registered nurses, activity therapists, all of the things you would expect of a comprehensive, well-thought-out clinical program to care for their unique individual disease states. Patients will participate in groups and activities throughout their stay. And at discharge, very important point, at discharge, we have a very robust discharge plan that includes a, a safety plan for these patients so that when they leave the hospital, they know how to re-access resources if they require them or if there's a change in condition that the family knows how to respond and, and assist the patient. And no patient walks out the front door of the hospital without arranged transportation to their home. So maybe family or friends that may take them, but we provide transportation in the alternative to ensure that the patients are not left at the front door of the hospital to wander a neighborhood, which in some communities, that, that's a, that's a valid concern that, you know, we don't want patients wandering around our neighborhood. So we are, we are certain that that does not happen. I should also mention that we have a number of security features that are unique to this hospital. And I think our engineers and architects will talk a little bit about it, but I'm going to sort of give you my, my take as a clinician and as an operator. The hospital has concentric rings of electronic security. Once you enter the building, you cannot exit unless you have a wristband that electronically activates the security measures at each port, point of entry in the hospital. There are Sally ports in different parts of the hospital to prevent patients from being able to go in and out of the hospital. We provide for the recreation comfort of the patient with outdoor activity yards that have walls that are either internal to the, to the structure of the building or if they're on the back of the building, they have walls that are not scalable. And we have considerable experience in, in, in engineering walls to ensure that they are both aesthetically pleasing, create a nice environment, because we want the patients to experience dignity while they're with us. Deinstitutionalized, deinstitutionalized look for these hospitals with very high finishes, as you'll see in some of the pictures as we go through this in a moment. But the concentric rings of security, we have technologies that we employ that are cutting edge in the industry. And I don't know of any of our other competitors or operators in this particular field of, space of medicine that are using them today. But one of them is a technology, in, in, when a patient's admitted to a hospital, they get a wristband. We're all accustomed to that. The wristband that we provide in the hospital for our, for our purposes The wristband that we provide in the hospital for our for our purposes is a non-tamperable wristband that looks a lot like a Fitbit. It's very low-profile, but it can't come off without a special tool that only we have. And it is programmed to identify where the patient is in the hospital at all times, and it's also programmed to indicate where the patient can be and where they cannot be. And if they pass a threshold where they should not be, there's an immediate alert that goes out to all the iPads that the staff are carrying and to the nurses' station to alert that a patient has stepped out of one of the the boundaries or zones that they are allowed to be in. So kind of the typical thing that we experience, and this is why it's important, is whether we like it or not, even in hospitals, sometimes people find love and make relationships. And so it's important for us to know if a patient enters another patient's room where they're not supposed to be for reasons that probably seem obvious. So that's one good use. It also allows us to know that when the patient moves throughout the hospital, when they are escorted into to different parts of the hospital, like the gymnasium, that they are within that track of area that they are programmed, that their band is programmed to allow them to be in. So it provides a lot of security to ensure the 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 life and safety of the patients. I'll also mention on the life aspect, life safety aspect, these wristbands have been upgraded and continue to be upgraded with biometric sensors so that we can determine signs of life at all times with these patients. So if a patient were to suffer a medical emergency or were to attempt some act of self-harm, we would have a very rapid indication of a change in condition in order to alert the clinical staff to respond. So those are some of the things that we're able to to do. It's also very important for us that we partner with our community, and I'm going to let Greg talk a little bit about that.
Thanks, Dr. Woods. Orlando Health has a rich history of coordinating the care of our patients with various entities throughout the community, and behavioral health will be no exception for this. We believe very much in partnering with community agencies, in fact, have been doing so for for over a hundred years. In this space, we are looking to offer school outreach programs. Unfortunately, adolescents often have a troubled existence and and have various behavioral health, mental health issues that need to be addressed. Working with teachers to train them on suicide, recognition of of depression and suicide prevention is very critical to what we do. Also, making certain that the school has ready access to resources in the community so that they can rapidly move the students to those resources when indicated. The veterans and military personnel is another population, subpopulation in our community that oftentimes have behavioral health issues. It is a population that we work with closely. Again, the intent is having programs that can address their needs as well as work with community partners to make certain that they have that specialized treatment programs are available. Finally, we work with law enforcement, fire, crisis teams, churches, and other community health services that are available throughout central Florida, to make certain that for those in our community that routinely confront behavioral health issues, that, again, they know they have the support of Orlando Health, and they have the support of a modern behavioral health hospital to care for patients in a timely manner. We wanted to kind of take some time here on the front end of the presentation to kind of lay for you a predicate in terms of why this program is so important to us, how we are looking to improve and expand access here in the Orlando area for behavioral health, very much an important population. But we also know that this is the planning commission, so we want to quickly turn now to the construction and engineering portion of the program.
Chip Hill, six thirteen West Main Street, Louisville, Kentucky. I am the architect for the project and work with Acadia Healthcare on these types of hospitals across the country. Just a quick overview of the site and the the building itself. The site is ten point three-three acres, located at fourteen fifty-two South Orange Blossom Trail, and it's basically immediately north of the Sam's Club and just west of Piedmont-Wikiwa Road. We have a hundred sixty-eight parking spaces provided, and that is that number is based upon what the functional need for this type of facility is based upon our experience with these hospitals across the country. And the property is Zone CR, Regional Commercial, and we are a permitted use, hospital is permitted use in the CR zone. The building itself is a hundred thousand, roughly a hundred thousand square feet, two stories and a hundred and forty-four beds, and those beds are broken down into six distinct twenty-four-bed nursing units to allow for the separation of the various patient populations that Dr. Woods outlined. All patients are obviously incompatible, patient populations are kept separate within this facility. The hospital does include the outpatient components that Dr. Woods mentioned, the partial hospitalization and intensive outpatient programs. We anticipate a construction start at the the end of this year and estimated open date of quarter to twenty twenty-five. The annual economic impact to the community and to the city is about twenty-one million, and that's based on a variety of of elements, everything from salaries, wages, and benefits, local property taxes, per local purchase services, charity care, and other items that we can further enumerate. And it is worth mentioning that the joint venture that's been formed by Orlando Health and Acadia Healthcare is a for-profit entity, so it is a tax-paying entity in the community. And there will be approximately two hundred and twenty full-time positions of very high-paying jobs that are that will be brought to the community as well as part of this. Dr. Woods did talk about security. This will be both a safe environment for the patients and staff and a healing environment. Everything comes back to, we need a therapeutic environment for this very traumatic period in someone's life, and that's that's our whole design philosophy within and outside this facility. But we do have controlled access, all external doors are locked, many internal doors are locked in terms of the the circulation routes within. There are regular patient checks, as mentioned, and there's twenty-four-hour video surveillance of the lobby, outdoor, and common areas as well. In terms of exterior materials, it's a combination of exterior insulation and finish systems, curtain wall and storefront window systems, accent metal panels, especially at the front elevations, stacked stone, lower elements on the building as well, and this is all intended to be consistent with Orlando Health's branding standards. So this is an Orlando Health branded facility within the community. And just as one final view here, the entrance coming off of Orange Blossom Trail as you come into the 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 drop-off canopy for the facility. And I'll turn it over to Adam Crunk, our civil engineer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Crunk of Crunk Engineering, seventy-one twelve Crossroads Boulevard, Brentwood, Tennessee. I know Mr. Hitt gave a good presentation of our site layout, and I won't belabor it very much, but just wanted to point out that our building is orientated north-south. There's a wetland and floodplains on both the east and west sides of the property that we're trying to mitigate impacts toward access. Again, on the north side of the property, which is on the top side of the page here, there will be a entry-only for emergency vehicles, and then the primary entry will be right-out only, but it'll be a right-in and a left-in off of Orange Blossom Trail. Then final landscape plan, I've tried to design a site in a way where we can serve as many trees as we could, particularly around the edges of the wetlands, and then have mitigated for those which we unfortunately could not avoid. And with that, I'd be happy to turn over any questions or concerns you may have. Thank you.
Does staff have any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
The staff or the applicant?
The applicant, sorry. Okay, for the applicant.
Okay.
Which applicant? Dr. Wood.
Okay, Dr. Wood, please.
I think I heard you mention something about outpatients.
Beg your pardon, sir.
I think you mentioned something about outpatients.
Yes, sir. So the hospital will have two outpatient programs that are called intensive outpatient and partial hospitalization, and these are step-down levels of care or an alternative to inpatient. And these are very small programs that operate Monday through Friday, a couple of hours a day.
Mr. Hitt, you told me it was inpatient only.
That's what it was originally conveyed. Obviously been corrected.
Okay.
And I will mention that is standard in in these behavioral types, these types of behaviors.
That makes perfect sense to me. The problem I see is outpatient facilities, medical outpatient, hospital outpatient facilities need ten percent of their patient visitor parking faces to be accessible to people with disabilities, and you only have six versus a hundred and sixty. I realize some of them are going to be employees, staff, but I don't think six is going to cover the ten percent required by ADA compliance.
Yes, sir, I understand your concern there. I think I think there's a primary difference, though. Outpatient services, as it's defined in the ADA code, really is referring to acute-care individuals coming in for surgeries that have mobility impairments. In many cases, these outpatient services are more, you know, attuned to, it's really more of a doctor's visit. I mean, and they don't happen very frequently either, if you want to explain that, Dr. Woods.
Yeah, I think the distinction between acute medical outpatient versus behavioral health outpatient is these are generally ambulatory patients who are in good physical health and not seeking invasive or other types of medical procedures. They are here for talk therapy. They're they're coming for groups and activities.
And there's no rehabilitation?
I'm sorry, sir.
Pardon? There's no rehabilitations also?
I beg your pardon.
Rehabilitation?
Oh, no physical rehabilitation, no, sir. I apologize, I'm a little deaf in one of my ears.
No, I saw someone who said something about assisted living in one of these charts. Is it considered assisted living?
No, there is no assisted living.
Okay, I saw some graphs in here and had assisted living.
What you might have seen is from the traffic study. So unfortunately, yeah, so the IT manual does not have a designation specifically for behavioral health hospitals, but there is a very big difference in the traffic demands between, again, an acute-care hospital with emergency services staffed at a much higher level than a behavioral health hospital, and we use nursing homes demand within the IT manual as the best comparison to a behavioral health hospital. That's likely what you're referring to.
Yes. And you're confident that you're you're exempt from the outpatient facility needing ten percent?
Yes, sir.
ADA parking?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Anyone else have questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Washington.
The, this is great, by the way. I belong to a youth development organization, and all of these young men are at the high school level, and we deal with, it's a small group, twenty to thirty young men each month. And one thing I brought up is part of the board director's meetings for my organization is we have these young men in front of us, and sometimes we just wonder what's going on in their head. You know, we talked about this, we all know about the suicide, we know there are a lot of behavioral issues, we know with gun violence, a lot of it is has mental originations. And my point is, my question is, will you be able to assist groups like mine, and there are many of them, to recognize signs of a mental health concern and to get in front of it before it's too late?
Absolutely, and we welcome the opportunity. Part of our mission and part of our service to the community is educating organizations, houses of worship, schools, other law enforcement, fire department staff on signs and symptoms of mental illness, substance use disorder, and appropriate ways to intervene and assist those individuals. And this hospital will also be able to provide both in-person and remotely assessment services if there's really an issue that is obvious and present, and you believe that that individual is at some risk, we'll be able to provide immediate assessment services to help understand what the condition is, the extent of the condition, and what may what resources may be most appropriate to help that individual.
Okay, so it could my organization or any other organization touch base with your group for training? Not in-depth training, but something.
Oh, absolutely. That we have standardized training for all types of organizations so that you have, as laypeople, you have an understanding of the early signs and symptoms and warning signs, how to identify those, and then how to access resources to help if that if that is a if you have a concern with a specific individual. Absolutely, we we want to come and train the community. It's a that's part of our mission, it's part of what we do to help improve the total population health of the community.
Thank you.
Any more questions of the applicant?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. I've got a question, the applicant, then of staff. Applicant, then staff. So we'll start with the applicant. I understand that you guys have an existing facility in Longwood. Is this one going to be replacing that?
Maybe I'll let Greg speak to that since that's an Orlando Health project.
The short answer is yes. That building is a very old building, one that is reaching end of life. The plan is for the behavioral health functions to move here and the acute care to move to the Lake Mary area. We will maintain medical office buildings on the Longwood site, we will maintain a freestanding emergency department, but the present acute care facility there will be raised.
Okay, so whenever you start talking about the two hundred and twenty full-time employees, would we anticipate that a number of those employees that would be at this facility would be transfers from your existing facility? Would that be accurate?
Yeah, I think some some will be. We currently operate eighty beds there, this is a hundred and forty-four beds, so we will be adding staff over and above what we currently have.
Okay.
And I'll just amplify that just a little bit with respect to the staffing expectations. At a hundred and forty-four beds, two hundred and twenty is a conservative estimate of the number of employees that we will have. In my experience, particularly with our new designed hospitals, we're probably looking at closer to two hundred and sixty full-time employees equivalents for this hospital.
Okay, thank you. Now staff. Okay. Mr. Hitt, I have a question for you. How is this project going to impact the Pentecostals of America that's directly to the north of that? The scuttlebutt that I've been hearing is that the Pentecostals of America may at some point add a school or some other more religious-type services over on their property. Would this affect that their ability to do so?
I do not, I can't speculate, because, you know, school issues are totally different, but it depends on how their how their school requirements are are set up. Again, I can't speculate.
So we just don't, we don't know that if if an existing business there may they be told that they can't operate a school because there's a behavioral health hospital next door.
Again, I would not speculate, because we don't know the requirements for their school system that they've that they've got. One of the things that that I did ask, I did get a call from one of the parishioners for the for the church, and the question I had was, have they, has has there been an outreach effort, and there has been. We required a a community meeting, it was held, no representatives from the Pentecostal Church were present, they were invited by a couple of different calls, they've reached out, I believe, about five times, and still nothing has, they have not returned calls or made any effort to talk to the applicants about this project. So the options there, they just have not afforded themselves to to come and talk. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions of the staff?
I have a question. Your inpatient stay, are you limited by the amount of days for inpatient stay?
Thank you, sir. The length of stay for a patient is determined by the patient's clinical condition. It is not predicated on any other basis, but the average length of stay is in that sort of seven to ten-day range. There will certainly be patients that will be there for one or two days, and there may be some patients that may be there for fifteen, twenty, thirty days. We see that more often with senior patients. We, when we apply medications to senior patients, we we do what's called low and slow, because they often have a lot of other medical conditions, and we want to make sure that we move in a very deliberate fashion with those medications. That sometimes takes a little longer.
All right. Any more questions of the applicant or staff? Bring it back to the, excuse me, is there anyone from the public which is to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and motion.
Yeah, I have a comment. I have a problem with this being an outpatient facility. I don't see how they're exempt from ADA requirements of ten percent visitors and patient parking faces to be accessible. They offered no proof. I think the city needs to look into that. That's the problem I have.
I've got a number of comments whenever, if you're done, Mr. Ryan. So just thinking about this, you know, whenever the applicant was showing this slide about the critical need, I think this is a very important function for our society is to have mental health, but it brings, you know, two two questions that I'm curious about is, you know, why that location and why in our city? And the thing is, when I look at a hundred thousand-square-foot building, and I want you guys, and I'm saying this for you guys that may not know this, you know, an average public store is around fifty thousand square feet, so think of two public stores stacked on top of each other when you're driving by, that's what you're going to see off to the, whenever you're driving by that facility. It's a good-sized facility, and, you know, why, why there? Why in our city? You know, I mean, we start talking You know, I mean, we start talking about $21 million in economic value analysis, and 220 to 260 full-time employees, but if a number of them be transferring over, what does the city get out of it? What do we get out of it from our city? You know, I know they talked about the broader need of central Florida, but our constituents are in Apopka. And I'm just really struggling with this, because I've had people contact me saying, hey, they're talking about putting a behavioral health hospital down on 441. What do you think about it? Because I actually live nearby that hospital. You know, I would say maybe a mile, as a crow flies. It's not, nothing that's, you know, personal concern to me, but it concerns me from the city perspective. What do we get out of it? What does the city get? And I'm just not sure that's actually the, the right place for their, you know, that's, that's really where I'm struggling, is what do we get out of it? And why Apopka?
Well, that, that does lead up to another question. And perhaps a doctor could answer this. What is the next closest facility of this type to here? And what would be the, the circle, or what would be the service area for this facility? Where will we be bringing patients in from?
Yeah, thank you. So, we did a heat map study to understand from the Orlando Health system of all of their hospitals and emergency departments, to understand where the patient populations are coming from and where they're going to. And what we found was that West Orange is where the majority of the patients are coming into the health system, seeking care for behavioral services. Apopka made very good sense to us in terms of its geographic location and reach to the various emergency departments, not just Orlando Health, but other emergency departments in the broader community. And we recognize that there is a significant need within Apopka and the broader communities around Apopka. And so having the hospital in this location makes it easier for families to be able to come and visit their loved ones, makes it easier for the patients to be able to access care that's close to home. The next closest facility is in Orlando proper, and that is quite a distance.
Okay, so what would be the coverage area for this?
It would be about a 30-mile radius.
Okay, thank you.
Which brings up my next concern, which, again, why Apopka? You know, what do we get out of it from a city perspective? Because that intersection there at 441 and Piedmont MacGyver is getting very constrained as it is with the number of traffic, and I'm having a struggle to see where this is a good idea. If you're going to say we have a whole bunch of traffic coming from West Orange, maybe we have employees coming from Longwood. It's just people transiting through our city, but maybe we're not getting any real value out of it from the city perspective. That concerns me, to be fair.
Well, I appreciate that. The number of staff that will come over from Longwood is yet to be determined. We know that it is, very few of them live in this, in this region, in this area. And so we expect that there'll be some significant attrition of individuals who choose other jobs within Orlando Health in other settings. We do expect that the majority of employees are, are going to be drawn from this community. And to the extent that there is a shortage of psychiatrists, which there are within Apopka and, and central Florida, frankly, the United States. We have deep relationships with, with medical schools and residency training programs for psychiatrists, and we expect to bring new psychiatrists into the community, new physicians, primary care physicians, and others that are going to be able to help the total population of the community. So I think we have an opportunity to lift the overall health of the community, and I think we have an opportunity for Apopka to be seen as a place that is caring for the whole individuals as we aspire to do, mind, body, and spirit. And I think those are value propositions that are not necessarily quantitative, but when we go back to the numbers, with the number of employees, the tax revenues that we generate from this business, there are, it's not insignificant. I'm sorry.
If I may add one other point, I would, had the benefit of coming to the first DRC meeting in which the police chief offered some comments about issues they were having with behavioral health patients leaving the Advent Hospital. And he asked a lot of pointed questions about, okay, well, what are you doing to keep patients secure? Dr. Woods has since met with, since met with the police chief to alleviate that, but, you know, he seemed to think that there'd be a tremendous benefit to have a service nearby, to help take individuals that the city takes on from a police standpoint.
I think just to amplify that, just amplify that a little bit. I met not only with the police chief, but also the head of the fire department, and they both had questions. And in all candor, they, much like you, Commissioner, they, they were, said, why, why here? Why in our backyard? And we talked for, it must have been close to two hours, and went over all of the questions and concerns that they had. I subsequently followed that up with a whole raft of, of documents and other engineering and architectural to demonstrate exactly what we're going to do. And the feedback that I received from both of them was that they supported this project because they thought it was a value proposition add from the health and welfare of the community, and for the kids in the community as well. I, I can't speak with authority on the question you raised earlier, and if it's, if I'm out of order, please tell me, on the issue of the school that is potentially proposed for the church that is next door or adjacent to the property. Our other hospitals in Florida, they are within, some are within 100 feet or more or, or less of schools. There's no, I know of no statutory prohibition or regulatory prohibition that prevents that from being the case. It's a, it's a hospital. It's an acute care hospital for behavioral health patients. And we hope to be able to partner with the church and extend their ministry. Our patients, the patients that come to us, as I said, they're our neighbors, they're your neighbors, they're the folks you know, and they have spiritual needs as well. And we do have chaplaincy services, and we do have spiritual services that we, we want to have provided for our patients while they're with us. And I hope that we can have that relationship. I personally reached out three times to Pastor Hill, and I know that Orlando Health has reached out at least four times to Pastor Hill, both voicemails and emails, and, and we have not received a response. And we will have conversations with them at the first opportunity that they welcome a conversation. We want them to be comfortable, we want all the neighbors to be comfortable, and if there are things that we can do to help contribute to their mission, we're going to do that. And I hope that that is helpful.
It is, thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of questions related to what Commissioner Doody put out, and, and I appreciate Chief McKinley's concern and that this may make his job easier, but it also occurs to me that we'll be bringing in people from all the surrounding city behavioral problems. And is this considered a secure facility? Do you have security on staff? Do you have security outside, inside?
We do. We have security outside and inside. The, there are video surveillance as well of the exterior of the building and the common areas of the building for patient protection and privacy reasons. We can, obviously, we cannot have videos in, you know, where there's an expectation of privacy, like a bedroom and whatnot. But there are cameras, it's recorded, those recordings are stored, so that they're reviewable, and they are reviewed by our administrative staff on a routine and regular basis. But we do have internal and external security. And then all of our staff are trained in what we call Handle With Care, which is a management of, of, and prevention of aggressive behavior, so that we can get ahead of an issue if a patient becomes agitated or disturbed and settle them down. We have comfort rooms in, in the hospital that are sensory rooms, they're beautiful. And if you saw the pictures of the hospital, and I know it's hard to see on that screen and get an appreciation, this hospital, these hospitals are designed to have very high finishes, very high touch, for the purposes, for the purpose of ensuring that we're respecting the dignity of those human beings who are coming for help. I will also comment that the police chief, when I spoke with him, the issue wasn't so much the patients in Apopka proper, it was the fact that patients from all over the communities, surrounding communities are already coming here, or, and causing concerns for the, for the police chief with respect to these patients walking away from medical facilities. So if you're a Baker Act-receiving facility, you may get patients from all over the place. It's our experience, our long experience, the typical radius is about 30-mile radius of reach. After that, it becomes too burdensome for patients to be able to get to a hospital in most cases.
So, to clarify, so, a Baker Act is one thing, but there won't be any court, anything from the judicial system sent here for any reason?
That is correct. We are not a, we are not a forensic facility. We will not be taking care of the criminally insane or individuals who require long-term psychiatric mental health care, you know, the, in the, sort of the tradition that you might think of an old institutional state hospital. This is not that. This is short-term acute care, crisis stabilization, and return to outpatient so that they can continue with their life. The vast, vast, vast majority of our patients are going to return to their homes, their jobs, their families.
Thank you. Any more questions, applicant or staff? All right, bring it back here for discussion.
So, back to, back to the discussion point, Mr. Chairman. And, and I'm just talking to you guys. I'm really struggling to see where the, where the community of Apopka benefits more than the costs that are going to be given to us from the increased traffic, and, again, people coming into our community, maybe even with issues. And I don't mean to degenerate, this is an important mission, I understand that. I think for society, it's very important. But the question is, I don't want to see Apopka suffer the consequences of something that benefits the surrounding communities more than it benefits us. And that's just where I'm struggling to get to, to a yes on this. I'm struggling to get to a yes on this. So I'm hoping maybe somebody up here can convince me otherwise.
Couple of quick points. Traffic is less than a commercial outlet if it was going to be there. That's one big one. Taxes. The, the accessibility for the police department and the fire department. The angle and the location of this is set up, and the, like the, the applicant had mentioned, the finishing of the building itself, it's extremely high-tech, good-looking, good-looking facility. It's secure. It is not for, like you mentioned, the, any court order-type behavioral issues. That, that, in itself is, it's pretty good.
That's, that's a good point. They have their own security, so they have to worry about calling the police in there.
I'm not worried, the security is at least my concern.
Well, the traffic, I mean, I think they're...
Well, my concern is that we're going to suffer all the consequences, but the people that work there are going to live outside the city, the people that visit there are going to be outside the city. But the city bears all the, the consequences of the traffic and, you know, because the thing is, that's really on the city limit line to the southeast corner. I mean, I don't expect the people that work there are going to drive downtown and visit places and do other stuff. I just, I don't expect, unless they live in this way.
Are you worried about the traffic?
I'm worried about the traffic, and I'm worried about the fact that the city, if we give this, let's say, give this thing approval, is, is this juice worth the squeeze? That's what I'm getting at, economically speaking.
And, and on that economic point, just a reminder that you are sitting as the planning board, you're looking at this from the land use component, not from the policymaking component. You're really applying land use development code, land development code and comprehensive plan to the application that's submitted, and does it check those boxes?
Fair point.
I would like to speak in favor of this. Probably most of you don't know that I spent over 30 years of my first career in healthcare. And there was not one time that I was in, in great appreciation of any health entity, individual, location that could provide health services to individuals.
Is your mic on?
The mental health situation that we have in our country, in this community.
Is it on red? Is, is kind of one of those things that when you bring it up, it's not wanted to be talked about. Because, you know, there's so many people, just suck it up. Think positive. And in the true reality is very simple. There are people that struggle. They might have small episodic, you know, things that happen. There might have been something that happened in their personal life, in their family life, in their work life, et cetera. And to have access to caring professionals in a extremely upscale facility, we all know who Orlando Health is, we're all very happy that Orlando Health is one of the healthcare providers in our, you know, central Orlando area, and to be able to partner with Arcadia, I think the professionalism and the things that they will be able to provide will very quickly transition to be a very positive experience. So, I, I look at, and I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Doody, you know, traffic, that type of thing. The true reality is by 2025, we're going to have more traffic than we have today. It's just, just the reality. You know, it's just the reality of what we've got. But to have, you know, a location like this, I realize that the one in Longwood's going to be phased out, and I kind of thought that when I saw this. I think it's being replaced with a very top-notch professional, you know, location, building, facility. And I think it's, the access provides a better ability for those individuals who need to visit and have access to quickly get in and out. This is not a residential neighborhood. You know, it is, it is a, you know, commercial, and as the attorney said, you know, the, the zoning that we're looking at, does it meet those requirements? And I personally, as I've reviewed this packet, I believe it does.
Thank you, Commissioner. One comment I would make, in, in reference to your concerns, Commissioner Doody. Again, this is, we're reviewing the major development plan. It's not a change in zoning, it's not a special exemption, it's not a future land use, as, as our attorney so kindly pointed out. So, at the end of the day, it's, does this fit in the area, content and character? The, the traffic, and I think Mr. Hitt has a valid point. If you look at the area, you look at where Walmart is, and then you have Sam's, you know, this is ripe for development. And say, say this, this goes by the wayside, that's probably going to be some type of strip mall, access stores, whatever. So the traffic from that is going to be drastically higher, and the, the trips will be drastically higher. This is something where people are coming in on a shift, coming out on a shift, versus a constant flow of traffic. So I don't know that that's an issue. And again, you go back to the, you know, people own a piece of property, they have a right to do things with their property, and if it's not the ideal thing, or what you personally would do, or, or would personally would want, it's really not relevant, or it's relevant, does this fit that content and character of that area? Was that something that would be a nice development or serve that area? And I know it's adjacent to the church, but I really don't think that would be a huge issue because of the, the type of people that are there and the security involved. The secondary thing would be, when you, you spoke about the, the benefit to the city, well, the benefit, you know, short-term and long-term, the, the impact fees will be astronomical in something this size, and the cost, which will help with the infrastructure. And I think long-term, we have to back up a little bit from the initial behavior, you know, the first thought is, you know, mental hospital, oh, no. And, and this is a little different than that. It's not one flew over the cuckoo's nest, it's more of a, a therapy place. I, I don't have a problem with it based on that. And like the doctor had pointed out, it's not adjacent to any neighborhoods or anything. I mean, it's close to neighborhoods, I'm, I'm not far from it either. But it's not budding up to a neighborhood. It buds up to a church, it has, you know, and that church's activity is basically two days a week. So, I don't have a problem with that.
Any more comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, from the planning commission, to recommend approval of Arcadia Orlando Health major development plan, subject to the findings of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Mott. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Next item, site plan of floor and, floor and decor Apopka plat. Summary is Mid-Florida Freezer Properties LLC. Owner, applicant, Kimberly Horn and Associates. Care of Brian Ashby PE. Location, southwest corner of Lakeview Drive and US 441. Mr. Hitt.
Thank you. Like you mentioned, this is a plat for floor and decor. This was a development plan that had already come for, for hearing before you. This is, the owner is currently Mid-Florida Freezer Properties. The applicant is Kimberly Horn Associates, with Brian Ashby as the engineer. Location is the southwest corner of Lakeview Drive and US 441. Future land use is industrial, and the zoning is I L industrial for a 5.72 parcel of property. And basically what they're doing is putting together four pieces of property into one for this particular use. That's the... That's the, this is probably the, the one plat that I've seen is just like one big chunk of property versus taking multiple properties and rearranging them different ways. So this, in this case, the DRC did recommend approval of the floor and decor plat because, again, it follows the, the original major development plan. And as part of this recommendation is subject to the following conditions: approval of the Shepherd Avenue right-of-way vacation, this is on the western side of the property, 20-foot dedication for right-of-way adjacent to 441, and the reviews, of course, by the city engineer and city surveyor. That's our report. Just a legal recordation of the property, as always.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hitt. Do we have any questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Mott.
The, Lakeview Drive there, Mr. Hitt, is, that's currently a two-lane road going into 441 there in Boy Scout. Is there any plans to at least put a turn lane on that, on that little section there? That's a very heavily traveled road to get to 441 so you, you know, you can go back, back east toward Apopka.
It's extremely heavy. I've gotten caught in that, that scenario more times than one, and you'd think I'd learn after being here for 30, 32 years, but I still don't. Pam Richmond, our traffic person, is, is looking into that, trying to see if we can get a left-hand turn lane. The problem is that the Woodshed Restaurant is in that southeast corner of 441 and, and Lakeview, so it's, unfortunately, we haven't been able to get any right-of-way from that, and it is a county, county road also. So, we're, we're trying to get that, as much cooperation as we can from Orange County, and of course, the, the applicant is, the, the road right-of-way that we've got is, it's fairly wide, but the, the problem is that southeast corner, there is a drainage, sewer drainage there, and it's, it, it would cost probably, from what I've been hearing, $300,000 to $500,000 to move that in order to put in a right-hand turn lane, even if we got the property from, from Woodshed, so, or the old Woodshed that's not there anymore. But, but Pam is working on that to try and get that a little bit better, more, more accessible to get out of that, off of that area there.
And, and I believe that the, the right in, right out is on the northwest corner there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, yeah, there's a, there's basically a median there that, that they wouldn't be able to turn left out of there, so.
So if somebody's going westbound on 441, they would need to make a left on Lakeview and then come in entrance off of Lakeview?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the other option, of course, is just going, you know, back down to Benning Road where it turns into Orange Avenue, and going west and then going up to 441 where the traffic light actually is a little bit easier to get in and out of.
Yeah.
I've done that before, too. I've gotten a little smarter in my age.
I, I have, I have as well.
Yep. And then, of course, the other option is to go down GE Road over by where Amazon is, and then go up to Hermit Smith Road where there actually is a turn lane there at the traffic light. So, there's a few different ways to conquer that area.
Okay.
Unlike a lot of roads that we do have, there's, there's options, a few different options, at least going westbound and then coming back around.
Any more questions of staff? I don't assume that we need a presentation on this. Is there anyone from the public which to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, recommend a motion to approve the floor and decor Apopka plat, subject to the following conditions. One, approval of the Shepherd Avenue right-of-way vacation. Two, 20-foot wide right-of-way dedication adjacent to US 441. Three, reviews of the city engineer and city surveyor.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Stanley. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. There we go. Funny how all our road problems always circle back and words, "Orange County" come up.
Yes.
Imagine that. All right. Do we have any old business? Any new business?
I have one, one item of new business that's, has already been here a few weeks, but we do have a new planner. His name is Amir Hamza, and he comes to us from Chicago area. And so we welcome him with open arms and glad he's here.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you. All right. There's nothing more? Meeting adjourned.
Good job.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.